Called order the city council work session for the CDB's Grand Forks for Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. City Council, please call roll, please.
Mayor Steve Gander?
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead?
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riepel?
Here.
Council members Clarence Vedder?
Here.
Dale Helms?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Mark Demers? Brian Larson?
Here.
Those term requirement, number one, discussion on outdoor wood furnaces. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Council President. We have had a request about what the regulations for outdoor wood furnaces or outdoor boilers are here in the CDB's Grand Forks. We do not currently have any regulations or zoning restrictions on those. Mr. Johnson, I believe, is here. Or he was gonna... Nope.
Nope.
He's not here. Okay. He said he was gonna be here and kinda talk about what he wanted to do, but I can give you kinda the gist of it. So with... I'm not sure if you're all familiar with them, but they're those ones that use... They kinda look like a little shed. They're remote. They sit outside there. They can burn for long periods of time and they heat up usually a water or an antifreeze type system, and then they come into the house and they heat the house that way. So the League of Minnesota Cities does not have a model ordinance for them. What some of the cities are doing is regulating them and not allowing them, based on some of the emissions, those types of things. But with that, I believe, Grand Forks to our west there, they do not allow them, but they enacted that quite a while ago when they first came out. So I will answer any questions you might have with these, but right now we don't have any regulations for them. And if we do entertain them, what I guess what I would suggest is that we look at putting together what setbacks would be, what type of chimney heights, those types of things. So with that, I'll take any questions the council may have.
Where is he located at in the city?
I'm not sure what his address is.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Reno, Nevada, had, you know, back when it was from trucking days or whatever, but they're in a valley, and they had regulations on these outdoor. I think maybe if you get all that city administrators in Reno, Nevada...
Okay.
And, you know, like, the wind blows here, so it's not a big thing, but if they're in a zone, you know, it's pretty powerful. That's just like worse than the tar plant.
Yeah, 'cause I guess how they work is... So once they reach the temperature, the desired temperature, whatever it's set, then it restricts the airflow into them, so it kinda half smothers it to a certain degree, so they burn a lot longer.
Oh, there... That's a slick thing, you know?
Whether, how true it is or not, I don't know. The new ones that you can get now are supposed to be a lot more efficient, and they don't put out near the amount of smoke as some of the older first-generation ones. How true that is, I guess I don't know, but that's what they're marketed as.
Yeah, I guess I would say I'm interested in this. It would be nice to learn a little bit more from Mr. Johnson, if he had some product information on the specific boiler that he was proposing. I think that would be helpful and could help us develop an ordinance around this as a possibility for alternate methods of heating our homes, as we're all bracing for higher natural gas prices this winter. So, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Helms?
I'm sorry.
No worries.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I think the woodburners are pretty efficient in whatever nowadays, and I think with the... Basically, depending on what happens on this election, you know, it might be... We might all be looking for them if we don't get... Don't have any fuel or whatever to burn or use, but I think we should be more concerned probably about the wood piles more than we should be about the burner itself. That's where I think we would probably... Probably could get into some real issues in my book, I think. But so, we just gotta make sure that if we allow it, and who does it, that we stay on top, that they have the... Their wood piles are, you know, either they keep them inside, or they keep them fenced in, or something along that line, or some kind of ordinance there, but...
The ones I've seen, they've required screening of some sort, usually like a fence or something along those lines.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Thank you. I knew I'd seen it, you know, when we travel up to Lake of the Woods Fishing in Green Bush, they have central boiler where these are manufactured. And so I think if you reach out to maybe Roseau, Warroad, some of the municipalities up in there, they'll have, I think, reasonable ordinances on how to operate these things efficiently and also be a good neighbor.
If I may, I know one other thing that I believe Ms. Ellis brought up was, in some of the information we got from other cities where people have brought them in, and there's been complaints from the neighbors, one thing she brought up is, if we do pass an ordinance like this, it would be nice to make sure that they have some sort of dual fuel, so that... So if, whatever reason, if there is an issue, if they violate it or whatever, it's not their only source of heat, so that they...
Check with their insurance companies.
Mr. Vedder?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Mr. Helms. The bigger issue is the wood storage. I mean, you're talking of cords of wood to get you through the winter, and have all that piled up in the backyard. If they don't have an alley to where they can access their backyard, that's gonna be insurmountable to even get it in the backyard. But you need some sort of a lean-to. You talk up north, and we go up north, and actually, I've got a wood burner at my cabin, and use it two or three weekends, and that's about it. I mean, they're are efficient, but if you look at some of the systems up there, they've got lean-tos and the chimneys going up through the lean-two, so they're not standing out in the snow loading their wood burners. They can get pretty elaborate. So that's gonna be more the issue of, you know, how elaborate is the system gonna be in the back, or what are we gonna require them to do or not do? Off the top of my head, I guess I'm not for it, and it is close to the community that we've got. If we'd have larger yards, then it might be, make more sense, but in the close-knit community that we've got, I don't think that we want wood burners in backyards at this point.
Helms?
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, did you happen to check with Polk County at all, if they had any kind of a... The reason I'm saying that's because my son just bought a house two and a half miles north on 220, and that has a wood burner out there. And so I didn't know if they would have some kind of an ordinance or anything, maybe, or...
No, they're not regulated, as far as I could...
They're not?
Okay.
They're not. Neither is building code enforced in a couple of the smaller cities, you know, the oranges. It would be maybe for nuisance or...
Answer if you wanna come on.
Yeah, we can look to see what those smaller communities have, but not every small community has adopted the Minnesota Building Code or has the certain requirements that we do. They don't necessarily have nuisance ordinances, those types of things. So we've... It's easier to look at the larger communities, and like, Polk County does not... They have what they call land use zoning. It's very limited on what they enforce, and there is no building code enforcement. So we're kinda just pulling from what we've seen from other communities that might have it, and what typically are... You wanna address more of the complaints, you know, 'cause that's where we're gonna get the phone calls, is smoke, chimney height, setback from a house. Like Clarence said, we have smaller lots than a lot of these communities do. A lot of them have a setback of 250 to 500 feet, which would take out, you know, half the neighborhood. So it would be very limited on that, but it isn't something that Ron and I can't, you know, start going through and seeing if Mr. Johnson is in fact really interested, or we see some other interest, that we have something prepared. So they're not prohibited in the building code. There's just requirements that we would need to review when they install them, and then there would be some zoning requirements, too, that we would want to attach to that, so.
Mr. Riepel?
Yeah, I was just getting to the point, too, that Nancy brought up about setback, because I'm looking here, and they're talking 500 feet on one of these ordinances, and that's a lot.
Mm-hmm.
But there's a reason that it's a lot, too. Something happens, it's... We're in deep trouble.
Yes.
The fire chief might have a little more comment on this, too.
Yeah, and we did address it with the fire chief. He couldn't find anything necessarily in fire code that prohibits them as well. The only thing that, again, he addressed was smoke and the smell, and then just, again, fire...
What they're burning.
The potential of fire hazard, which is why you have setbacks, so...
Yep. He also said that he hasn't been on a call on one of these either, so...
No, no.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you. What about somebody that's... I don't know if anybody's even gotten any in the city, but if they do, would they be grandfathered in? I mean, some more rules and this or that?
Essentially, if we were gonna do it, then it would be illegal, non-conforming use, and then if it was ever not used or became obsolete, then you would have it removed, like, say, within a year. You'd have to have it removed. If you're actually considering this, and that's your prerogative, I would draft an ordinance then that would control them, because if you don't, then you're ending up... Somebody could use a burn barrel and hook up, you know, a vent and not really be regulated. So... And if you look at the information that I provided you, it was a little bit generic, but it was from the MPCA. And the MPCA, I think the minimum setback from a building or the next-door neighbor was 100 feet, and that was a minimum if you had the new upgraded, what do you wanna call it, boiler system, fire, you know, system. And so I tend to agree with Mr. Vedder on the size of our lots aren't truly conducive to this type of thing. And then, the other issues that you also have is, you know, what are you gonna do with the ash if you're burning a lot of it? Make sure that you have those types of restrictions. Again, the ordinances or the nuisances regarding the wood piles, those types of things. These are more conducive to hunting camps, out to city limits, those types of things. Or if you can do it on an internal basis, then inside, like a big shop or shed or something on that line, as long as it is to code. And our bill... We don't have anything directly in the building code, but there is in the mechanical code that we were looking at, and it deals with the venting, the chimneys, and making sure that they meet all the standard regulatory EPA and guidelines for manufacturing. So there should be something if we're gonna be doing it, and then, you know, long story short, Mr. Johnson, we would, if you were gonna do it, and there was anything here, we would want them to let us know that they have them, and then it would be a non-conforming use until such time as it goes away. Or you could grandfather it in for three years until it's an upgrade, you know, to upgrade the system. Thank you.
Johnson, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we did speak about that. We can't think of any, from when we're driving around, we haven't... I guess I haven't seen any, but I haven't heard of anybody seeing any. The closest thing we have, as we do know, there are some of those, what they call like those add-on wood furnaces that you will have in your basement that will burn wood. There are a few of those in town. You know, how often they burn, that I don't know, but that's probably the closest thing that we could think of that is currently in town.
I think next time you bring it forward, make, you know, do aerial mounts for us so we can take a look at the lot and everything that's out, if we're even thinking about it. I mean, but... You must have anything?
Well, and I think what we would do is if we're gonna either have an ordinance that says you can use them, then we restrict them. If we're gonna not allow them, then we should have an ordinance that prevents them from being in the city. So one way or another, we should draft an ordinance that'll control the use.
And just two things. We've already adopted the mechanical code by reference, so we wouldn't wanna put that specifically in the ordinance, because when you put specific code in there, if it changes, then we'd have to go back and amend that ordinance. We just wanna make sure that we address it as the mechanical code, you know, is already adopted by reference. The second thing is, is to address your issue, we could give you an aerial layout. I can tell you that maybe 20% of the lots or less are 100 feet in width or more. So 80% of the lots in East Grand Forks are under 100 feet in width. So...
Ellis, anything? Any more direction, or what do you wanna do?
Well, yeah, I guess, is there... What is the general consensus of the council? Would you... I guess what I was thinking we could do is, we could see if Mr. Johnson will be able to come to the next meeting and give a little bit of idea what he was, what he wants to do, and in the meantime, if the council can kinda think about whether or not they would really want to have these in town or not, and we could look at either drafting an ordinance where we'd regulate them, or an ordinance where we would prohibit them.
Sure. All right, thank you, sir. Number two, discussion on bridge consultant, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. The Bridge Consulting Committee has finished their work with reviewing all of the proposals, interviewing the companies, and is ready and has made a recommendation to both cities for a consultant. The consultant we're looking at is SRF, and what we're looking at for now is the first of the five phases, and the first phase is the scoping phase, and that would be broken down into eight tasks, which are the project management, review of existing previously completed studies, identify all regulatory agencies with jurisdiction over the project, coordinate with MinDOT, North Dakota DOT, and other agencies, develop an outline of the PEL study process, develop the schedule for the PEL study process, and develop an estimate of professional services for that study phase, and research and develop a list of potential funding sources. They are anticipating that they would be able to complete this sometime either by late summer, mid to late summer, and they put together a not-to-exceed amount of $151,170.33. I have had some discussion with my counterpart over in Grand Forks. He is planning on bringing it to their work session on the 14th, and then adoption on the 21st. We did discuss... There was some discussion at the joint meeting about possibly having a follow-up joint meeting between the two cities, maybe to approve this or to pass this. In my discussions with him, he didn't really think that that was particularly necessary. He thinks we could probably do them individually, just have our council review it, pass it, have their council review it, and pass it. So I guess with that, the only other discussion item on there is, it was discussed that there would be a 50-50 cost split between the City of Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. I know on the Grand Forks side, they are exploring maybe another option, but that was what was discussed here, was the 50-50. So I guess I can answer any questions about that, but I will take any questions you might have about the proposal.
Riepel?
This is specific to an inner-city bridge, not one where we have no outside-of-our-jurisdiction permits.
Oh, this is for Mayerfield and the inner-city bridge.
Mayerfield's included?
It is.
Okay. Mr. Helms?
So is this... Is this will be a 50-50 split with them on... Or did we ever... Because I know there was some talk about, you know, "We want it more, so we should pay more," or something, you know what I'm saying, but...
That was the direction that we had taken as a 50-50 split. That's what I have for you tonight. I know there has... The idea has been brought forward to include the counties in this and do 25, 25, 25, 25 for the four entities. However, that is something that is new to the counties. They've never been a part of that discussion. They were at the joint meeting, but that was now discussed, and I don't know that that's gonna be overly... I don't know that they're gonna do it, but I know they're gonna make that request. But so that's why I'm... Personally, I'm suggesting we move forward with the 50-50 split, as that was discussed at the joint meeting.
So your counterpart across the river is gonna take it to their council on the 14th?
Correct.
And so they haven't approved or disapproved of it yet either then, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Mr. Vedder?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Mr. Helms. If we bring in the Mayerfield into this study, then it needs to be a quarter, quarter, quarter. If the counties don't wanna participate in it, then we drop the Mayerfield end out of the study, and we split this the 50-50 for the inner-city bridge. That's where I stand.
Exactly.
I'm standing with you.
Mayor?
I think that that would've been ideal, if we could've brought the counties in, but since they weren't at the conversation and the determination to go ahead with this consultant, and since the inclusion of Mayerfield makes it more palatable to Grand Forks to do it at all, I think it should be left in. Again, if Grand Forks, if it's just an inner-city bridge, they may not wanna pony up their 50%, but when it includes Mayerfield and the inner-city neighborhood bridge, then Grand Forks comes on board. That was the sense I got when we had the joint meeting. The inclusion of Mayerfield brings them in at 50%. Without Mayerfield, they may not wanna play ball, and that's cool.
Mr. Vedder?
Thank you. The joint meeting, the feeling that I got was that one of the council members on Grand Forks wanted to delay this as much as possible, so he talked everyone into bringing in the Mayerfield Bridge into this discussion, and at the same time, we talked about that the funding then should be split with the counties also. If Grand Forks still wants the Mayerfield Bridge in there, it's outside of their jurisdiction, so it's whether they wanna bring it in. If they wanna bring it in, then they should pay for that.
The beauty of having it in and having one consultant do both is, there's so much duplication between the two bridges. You're looking at very similar kinds of things, legislative things, funding things. There's so much overlap between the two bridges as to really laying out a roadmap. It's just way more efficient to have them together, and it doesn't even add that much extra cost, I wouldn't think, because it's, again, basically duplicating the process with a slight variation from the inner-city neighborhood bridge to Mayerfield. I feel it makes a lot of sense to have it rolled up, and if we didn't talk to the county about funding, then we still go ahead with it.
I don't disagree with you, Mayor. It's... I don't think either county, Grand Forks or Polk County, is in any big hurry to do a Mayerfield Bridge. So to do this study now and all that extra work, you're throwing money down the bridge, over the bridge.
Although we do have word that the interchange is going forward at Mayerfield right to the interstate. They're doing a study for that. So even at the county level, there is some movement on the Grand Forks side toward getting Mayerfield done.
There's one thing that was discussed when we were interviewing the consultants. One of the things that was brought up was the idea of the uniqueness of this particular situation with two new bridges, a new bridge at Mayerfield and a new inner-city bridge. How viable it is, I mean, this is very, very speculative, of course, you know, because it's weird. It's something very, very new. The thought process was, is that going forward for getting federal... Excuse me, federal funding, the idea of putting it together as a transportation system with two bridges, they thought would be very appealing to the federal government, and they thought that that might be something that would really potentially leapfrog us over some other projects, the fact that it's, in their terms, a more well-thought-out traffic system. Again, that's speculative. How much that's would translate into money is a big unknown, but they did think that it was something that was very unique, that we would be able to have to offer, and would maybe be something that would get us more noticed. But whether, how much you wanna bank on that, I guess I can't suggest.
So let's say if we're not gonna split it up for a ways, and they don't wanna do that, are we not moving forward with this? Are we just gonna delay everything?
Are you asking me?
I was just asking anybody.
We're delayed enough, don't you think?
If the counties don't wanna pony up, then I would say, I still want the project to go. Somewhere down the line, then, we're gonna recoup our money from the county then.
I was just asking. I just wanted to make sure.
That's where I would stand.
I would like to move forward and keep working at this, so I don't wanna delay it. I would like to move forward, but... Larson? Yeah, and I was on the committee here that helped select SRF. You know, it was made very clear, forever to acquire federal funds for either bridge, this process has to get started. I think it's fair to say that we have the highest priority of the four entities mentioned, two counties and two cities, here to get this thing going. It would be wonderful if the counties would participate in this cost share. I don't know the timeline for nailing down that commitment, and how that relates to this moving forward on either side of the river. David, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think it would be a little while before the counties would commit to it. They're gonna have to bring it back to their boards. There'll be that discussion about... I know that they had their engineers in that at the joint meeting, and that there wasn't much discussion on that, and that, I guess, if you pulled most people, the direction that seemed to come out of there was that it was gonna be between the two cities. Yeah, I think it would be a couple months before we could get a commitment out of the counties, just because I think it's something that they were gonna... They're gonna wanna discuss internally, and it would take some political debate on their parts, probably more on Polk County's, uh, Grand Forks side than ours, because I know Grand Forks County has, depending which county commissioners you ask, they have other priorities than this.
Yeah, and Polk County had mentioned, there's two other bridges they're also looking at ahead of this. I'd like to see it move forward as well. I'd like to see us, you know, pay no more than 50%, and ideally, it's less with county participation, but I think we should keep this moving forward. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
I'll bring it back, and I guess then what I'm taking is, I'll bring back a report on where we're at with any feedback I've gotten from the counties, but I will bring it back in its current configuration.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Number three, consider a request for outdoor rink and gravel lot. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. This request started, Blue is here from the Downtown Development Association. Blue met with Mayor Gander and Councilmember Larson about the idea of building the outdoor rink that has been in Town Square in Grand Forks on our side of the river in the gravel parking lot adjacent to the VFW Club. Mr. Murphy brought me into a meeting and asked me to do a little bit of homework on what it would look like if we wanted to build a rink in that space, and what kind of costs we may be associated with it. So I included a whole bunch of the, kinda the work I found and detail put together on the idea in the packet for you, and a map that tries to give you a little bit of an idea of the space, if we use the entire board setup that the DDA owns with the space that it could take up within that parking lot, and really just, I think, available to try to answer any questions any of you have. I don't have a recommendation one way or another on where you all want to go with this. It's simply a request to put the information in front of you for discussion. And so with that, I think I'm happy to just answer any questions or anything you may wanna know about it, about the idea. And Blue can certainly speak on anything you guys have for questions as well.
There are a couple of things that I have right away. You know, I've talked to you about this. I raised questions right away with that site due to a couple factors. One, because it's a busy road right there, and for safety, for people who are going to that, there's... It's close to sidewalks, close to the street. The other thing is losing parking spots for those locations, the businesses there. That's another factor. I know we talked about snow removal. We'd have to move it to the south parking lot, but that's gonna be used now because there's no parking in this location, so that'd have to be cost incurred of getting that out of there daily or weekly. And I... Couple of things where I said, well, why are we looking at a different location? Not against the idea of doing something like this. I'm just kind of more thought that if we looked at, we talked about by the Veterans Memorial there, cement, there's ample parking, there's ample drainage for spring runoff after it melts, you know, talking about, if, whenever it gets drained there, where is it gonna run? Is it gonna run into the Legion or VFW basement? You know, there's a lot of water there. You know, we got the better snow removal up there. We have, like I said, parking, possibility of, you know, maybe have other activities up in that area. You have a lot more space. You don't have to worry about if there's actually people on... Let's say they're playing hockey on this one downtown, and the puck goes off into the Mers or Fourth Street or...
It's a car.
Cars that are parked down the street. I like the idea of doing it. I just think that better location would work better for everyone. One of the main reasons is losing the parking spots for the businesses down there. That's where I'm at, and also, you'd have the windbreak from the, you know, dike there from the north, so... And there's electricity there. I know you were gonna look into that, but we don't know what kind of electricity is there, but there is. I know you were going to look into that, but we don't know what kind of electricity is there, but there is. That's just my stance on it, so.
Mr. Johnson.
I'm in total agreement with you, Mark. I think that's a wonderful idea, right there across from the fire department. You know, and they got a little shelter there, the library's there, the theater's there.
And you can even look at getting the businesses involved and doing activities there on a weekend. You know, maybe hot chocolate or whatever, and get River Cinnamon involved and their business in the, you know, Schreier there, or whatever it is. All the businesses downtown. I mean, it's easier and more room for everyone.
Mr. Mayor.
Couple of thoughts, and I'd like to hear from Blue also because he's pretty smart. You know, and this is, we can sure talk about it on its merits, pros and cons. I guess I'm not locked onto one location or the other. I know it's more visible on this corner. Where would be more tucked away? That's a benefit of doing it here. There's some thought that if it's adjacent to the business, then the spill-off would be more favorable to those businesses versus if it's a distance away. You know, you come off the ice and have a little something to eat or something to drink versus get in your car and just drive away. So that's a maybe as a benefit. And so I guess just in terms of the success of the venture, do we lose something by moving it to a more remote, out-of-sight area? I'm raising it as a question, and maybe Blue, you could weigh in from your experience how that could be.
Yeah, so where the rink has been historically in Town Square, you know, there's not much parking adjacent to it. It's actually kind of one of the appeals is that you have to walk down to it. So it creates that walkability, which Downtown East Grand Forks has really well with Bernie's, with Spud Junior, with up north, with Bully Brew right across the street. That space was just where we had thought was really nice in that walkability corridor. So that way, people can park where you're speaking about putting the rink, and then be able to walk and kind of have this nice little walking corridor. It's, the idea for us really came up as a, we know we need more things to do in winter. I think all of us are familiar with hearing from people that there's nothing to do in winter. And so where this came from is we want to do more. We don't just want to remove the rink out of Town Square and say, no more rink in there. We actually are looking at potentially what we can do in that space to enhance it even more, and creating kind of connectivity between this space right next to the VFW, all the way down into downtown Grand Forks as well. So creating a nice walking corridor. So we have an ice sculptor who's actually looking at doing some snow sculptures. We're looking at doing some different things down on the greenway, trying to just make it a lot more of a welcoming space. And that was the idea with that area at the VFW lot.
I understand the walkability, but you're not taking away parking spaces in Town Square. You're taking parking spaces away at this location.
Very true.
That was my main thing. I understand you want to have it downtown. I understand that. But I don't, and don't feel that taking away parking to put something there, you know. My belief, we should have sold this parking lot a long time ago. But it doesn't, doesn't sit well for me. I mean, we saw the letters in there of support. I didn't see one in there from up north or VFW support letters.
We chatted with them. They had gotten one to us, and I think that we just forgot to get the one from the VFW over to Reed on that. All of this kind of came together, and we started on that process. So I know we have letters from Jesse and from Randy. We just haven't sent those over. But the idea was more or less to bring this up as a concept and see where you guys landed on it.
I think it's a great concept. I like it. It's just making sure that, you know, we're doing it correctly. And I guess, I don't know, do we even have power on that side of the alley to be able to do this?
Yeah, so if we're talking to the VFW club site, the power is on the south side of the concrete alley, kind of adjacent to the back door of the VFW Club. So there is no power available immediately on the gravel site unless we, and I have not done this, I don't know if Blue has, unless we ask the VFW Club themselves if we can pull power out of their building. That's not a discussion that we've had. We haven't had any real discussions with any electric contractors at this point, just water and light and where power is accessible from. So that's certainly a concern that would need to be answered for lighting. It was mentioned earlier, my biggest concern in that site is snow removal. And right now, when we move snow off the sidewalks, we put it in that gravel parking lot. And now we're going to take it off the sidewalks, try to fit it somewhere. At the same time, take it off the rink, try to fit it somewhere. Where does it sit until Public Works can come and haul it away? And then at what cost is that to the city? Keeping, bearing in mind that the maintenance for this project is being asked, the city bears the cost of all the maintenance and not keep of the ice. So without a budgeted, anything in our plans for next year. So there is certainly positives at the alternative site that Olsted brought up, that, you know, there's just more space to put snow and to make it, to just let things be able to get snow off the rink. And if it sits there a little longer until Public Works can get in to haul it away, that's okay, right? But, you know, it's, those are just a couple of concerns that I see with it.
Anything too that we can look at, you know, one of these things is activity. So we can look at the All True funds. You know, I know that we bring that up a lot, but it's some, I'm sure we have balance in there that we could use to offset all this. And we talked about that, so.
Mr. Repel.
I think when you're looking at the Grand Forks site, you're looking more of a recreational-type skating. As a hockey rink, we're going to see a liability here with broken windows on cars. If you ever go out to a rink.
Oh, yeah.
The pucks are not kept on the rink.
Well, and it's something we've never allowed hockey sticks on our rink in Town Square. It's meant as, you know, like, I think we have on average about two to three wedding proposals on that rink.
But this is a, this is a hockey rink.
Yeah, the walls were built as a hockey rink. That's why we purchased it. And that might be, you bring up that good point that.
There's a liability here.
It's going to be a lot more hockey in that sense.
Kid loses a puck. He doesn't like losing a puck. He's going to go out on that street and try to retrieve that puck.
And so that's a question, is that a requirement of the City of East Grand Forks to have the rink be an official hockey rink? Or would you be okay? Because the one in Town Square has never been.
Tell me, you're the one proposing it to us.
Well, it's our walls.
I'm assuming that you would pay the liability insurance and probably give us half of our costs for maintenance on this, right?
We cover insurance on it because we own the rink, so we own those boards. And part of our agreement with the City of Grand Forks always on that rink was that we covered it under our general liability. It's one of the reasons why we said no sticks. We didn't want to have hockey pucks go through the windows of businesses. And we wanted it to be a place, we have skate helpers, 10 of them. We wanted this to be a place where a three- or a four-year-old could come and learn for the first time, being able to be with a skate helper.
And we probably don't need the boards. We can just put a small little sheet of ice there with some pads, and the kids can get out and skate. That's about one-fourth the size. We can still use the rest a lot for parking.
We have, we have other walls, so we actually own two different rinks. One of our rinks is those full boards that you see in the image. The other rink that we have, we've had since kind of the inception of the DDA. Those are only about two feet tall. And so it's worthy of the discussion of something I, we haven't even brought to Reed, just because we started this conversation with those walls. If that's something you're interested in, those are a little bit more modular in that sense.
I'm more interested in the other location that Mr. Olsted talked about is what I'm interested in.
And that's, that's been a location that you've looked at previously?
Yeah, I mentioned to Blue the first time we discussed it. It's not something we've really spent a lot of time looking at. The location near the Veterans Flags. Each year, when our department, internal Park and Rec Department, talks about strategic plans and different ideas for different programs to add in future years, we've talked repeated years about the idea of an outdoor rink in that site as a nice site close to downtown that could give this kind of just a rec skating, pleasure rink-style atmosphere that's a little closer to the businesses. Where that discussion has ended every year is how do we maintain another rink at current staffing without adding additional cost to the department? And that is, so it's an idea that every year gets wiped off the board just because there's not additional funding to make it happen. So that's the discussion we've had internally about that site. It's a rather unused portion of that parking lot that we think has potential that we could do something with. But not that there's been a ton of logistical research into how it would actually work.
This budget year, I think it's a better idea if the All True funds can be used. Because I don't think we have the money in the budget to handle this.
Senator.
Thank you, Mr. President. That was my first thought also was along the lines of Mr. Olsted said, I don't want to lose the parking. And I immediately thought about the memorial by the memorials also. But then as you guys started talking where you liked the rink so that people can't park right there, that they have to walk to it and walk around downtown. I thought, well, how about the old Douglas place over by the police station? It's all a grass lot now. I don't know if it's this big, but if you got a couple of different rinks, that might be a spot where there isn't a lot of parking there. So they'd still have to park downtown, probably in this lot, and walk down a block to it. That might be an option. The other thing that concerned me was the cleaning of the rinks and where you talked about that the door size doesn't fit one of our mobile snow things, that you'd have to have a snow blower manned by person. I'm not interested in that.
Yeah.
So if we can't modify the boards to where we can get a mobile unit in there, that would be a downfall for me.
Thank you. Just one thing I want to add. I know there was some talk about not allowing sticks or those kind of things. Just wanted the council to be aware, as far as I know, we don't have any provision or ability for staffing that. So it would be, we just wanted to be, we wouldn't have any way to really enforce that. It would kind of get used how it gets used, so.
Larson.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah, I like the concept. I think it's great, and then a good, good discussion on the location. Definitely some pros and cons. Yeah, over by the, seems like there's some more reasons why maybe we want to put it over by the Veterans Memorial, knowing that it's not the main drag intersection that DeMers and Fourth is. But yeah, I think it's a great concept. I think it's something we should give it a shot, should definitely use the All True funds for it. I hope that's a fit. And, you know, looking forward to seeing this at a council session. If we need to just make a motion with the specific location to keep this going forward, I think that'd be a great idea.
Thanks. Mayor.
One thing that we spoke of in a meeting after a meeting was this could be accomplished in two separate ways. One, the necessary ongoing maintenance, setup and maintenance could be done by a contractor, or it could be done by another seasonal staff member at almost the same cost. If we choose to do it with a seasonal staff member, that individual would also be available to help with some maybe cleaning snow off trails and whatnot. That really now we have a better benefit for doing it that way. Reed, is that close to what we talked about? So just for everybody's information, we have that choice either to bring in a seasonal person or do a contractor. Seem to be advantageous to have a person in-house whose hours then could be applied even elsewhere if needed.
Yeah, I think you said it well, Mayor Gander. That, to me, our current staffing, and I talked about that in the packet too, our current staffing levels don't really allow for, we have a hard time keeping two outdoor rinks at Stowson Nash Park in the condition we'd like. So we would need to look to add another staff member. We'd be happy to put that out as a, you know, a job advertisement. And then the next step would just be, the next agenda item is, do we get any applicants? Last year, we did not get a single applicant, so.
One question, I guess, I don't think it's been asked, is this just a one-time thing? Or is this something you're looking to do year by year? Are you going to move back to Town Square?
No, I mean, we would like to continue growing this connectivity between the two communities. We have about 10 partners over here for our organization, and we want to keep doing things. Downtown Forks itself needs to continue to grow, and so we never want to do the same thing the same as we did it last year. So our idea with this is keep building on this. Bring this rink over to East Grand Forks, continue to build on it, maybe start to bring over some outdoor seating with that, some igloos, things like that, to really create extra life on both sides of the river.
You're planning to do it more than one year, so.
More than one year, yes, sorry. My answers are always way too long.
So I want to make sure.
Mr. Holmes, and then I'll go to you, Johnson.
Thank you. It seems like there's an awful lot of ifs and hands on this, a lot of questions to be answered, whatever. And I think because we are running out of time here, we should move this on to another work session, I think. I'd like to continue discussing it, but I think we should go to another work session with it so we can do a little more.
Johnson.
We are not going to need any more equipment. You'll be handling with what you got.
Yes, sir, we've got plenty of equipment. We need the people to.
Sounds good. Let's move forward with it. Thank you, Mr. Blue.
Thank you.
Reed, do you have anything else on that?
You can certainly comment in another work session, too. I was just going to comment on the All True funds. The idea, certainly, I think in the short-term use of those funds on a one-year basis, that's, I think, would apply. I just, every time we talk about using those funds, I want to remind that it was a 10-year program, so it ends in 2026. It's a sponsorship sale with All True. I did ask Blue about the opportunity to sell sponsorships on an event, a program like this. The DDA would plan to sell sponsorships for their operation of it, so we would need to work through that. The intent of the All True dollars was not to offset ongoing maintenance of park and rec programs or activities. It was for new, different things. So in a one-year, I could see that applying. But if we're going to keep doing it after that, we need to figure out how to build it into our budget. It'd be my view of how those partnership dollars are intended.
I guess we can look at it and see what, keep track of what everything goes, costs, you know, whatever it may be, so.
Is there a pretty strong consensus to put it down by the Veterans Memorial?
My end there is.
And that's probably the last thing. And then I think it probably could come back to a council meeting to keep it, because it's going to be freezing very soon. Yeah.
Traditionally, ice doesn't go on in outdoor rinks till December.
Yeah, our usual goal is to try to have the rinks ready to skate on by the time school's Christmas break starts. On the location, at the Veterans Memorial flags, I'll need to do a little bit more work with water and light on what we have there for power, and if there's any cost associated with getting it for lighting. And I think if, as long as we're doing that work, I like the idea of the grass lot by the police department, too, just for an option, because we're not, then we're not interrupting any parking in this grass. It'd be easier to build and maintain. I mean, it's, it'd be a smaller rink, but it's an option on a one-year trial basis to look at if there's power available. So I could bring back both of those, bring back information on both of them.
Blue, you think it would accomplish for us what we're after? When we're out of the main drag, are we good?
Simple yes or no.
I think that it's worthy of the conversation, because we want to figure out what we want to do for our businesses, too. But they all, we approached them with that space, and so I would want to go back to them and check with them and see where they are.
Thanks.
Sorry, it's not a simple yes or no.
It's all good.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to number four, request to update seasonal pay scale. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. President. This summer, we had David Drown and Associates look at some of the part-time positions, seasonal positions we offer in the city. They looked at park and rec jobs, the mowing job at Public Works, and the library had a few positions that they looked at as well. So here tonight, just looking at the park and rec positions and the public works position of mower in the summer. We've had a hard time the last number of years recruiting applicants for some of these positions. The ones that they studied are those that we've had less applicants for. Most of these positions that we had reviewed, we have basically hired every single person that has applied and qualified. If they're 18 years old and have a driver's license and give us an application, we hire them. We have not had any opportunity to interview or try to make choices. And with that, we've had quite a fair amount of turnover in hires because we're hiring someone just simply off turning a piece of paper into our office. We don't get a great opportunity to vet them as qualified candidates, the right type of person, you name it. In a lot of cases, those people might come to work for a week, a couple of weeks, and it doesn't work out, and we're back to searching again. So that costs the city a lot more, it costs our department a lot of valuable time. So we think that if we can get our wages closer to the market, that could be one way to help garner more interest in applicants. So what's in front of you, the pay scale? This is included in our 2023 budget request that's been in front of you. So it'd be a matter of updating our pay scale with the new grades for these positions to be able to hopefully move that forward starting January 1st. So that's the request. The timing of it, I understand that budget discussions are still coming up. And the timing of it, I wanted it, just a good opportunity to have it in front of you for your review. I would like to see this approved as a separate resolution, the way it has been in the past. You've always approved the resolution for what the part-time pay grades are. If that happens next week, great. If you review it at the same time or after the budget gets approved, I'm fine with that, too, as long as we're in place January 1st to be able to offer hopefully updated wages for employees, both new and who we have on staff right now.
Anybody have any questions for Reed on this?
Welcome to the business world, Reed, with the applications.
And I understand that, I certainly understand that.
I think you did a good job here, Reed.
Senator.
Thank you. When Drown did the study, let's just pick the Zamboni operator. Are they saying that they shouldn't be at a grade three, they should be at a grade eight because of the duties that they're doing? Are we just saying that we want to move them to a grade eight?
Yeah, good question. The grade system that we have here is not, like, it's not the full-time grade. So they're pointed, they pointed it differently in that way. the full-time grade. So they're pointed, they pointed it differently in that way. She'd said that they did apply points to them, but the points didn't mean as much to how she suggested we should pay as just getting the pay rate to the market. And so the grades really are just, because grade eight is what we think the market pays for Zamboni drivers, that's why we call it a grade eight.
So it's not, the grade isn't based on the duties that they're doing?
Correct. Not in this part-time pay scale. We did have discussion about, now as minimum wage raises keeps going up each year in Minnesota, like, I think by 2024, the minimum wage in Minnesota might be higher than the grade one on our city full-time pay scale. And so we're probably not far away from wanting to look at mending these two together. So our part-time jobs are just paid right on the same full-time pay scale that all the full-time positions are. And then that would regrade them again, because grade ones through seven essentially would be the part-time jobs. I think the lowest full-time grade the city has is grade seven. So, yeah, sorry, I'm talking a lot, but yeah, to answer your question. Thanks.
Anything else for Reed on that?
I know we're up on a clock here. We're about to be out of here by six due to the election. I know that. Mr. Johnson, you're here. Would you be willing to come back to the work session? Because we did have some questions, and we asked to bring it back to a work session. Okay. Okay. Anybody else say anything? Not entertained a motion adjourned?
Move.
Second.
By Johnson, second by Larson. No one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.
I like that. Move.